Okay, we are live and we are recording. Can I ask for Deputy Mayor Stevens to lead us in the pledge of the flag?
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from March third, twenty twenty-two and and the March fifteenth special election meeting? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Citizens comments, we have any citizens there to speak? No, like we do have newly elected trustee Nate Collins in the audience, right? And I think Eric Reinigold, who has not been feeling well, is watching tonight live on Facebook. And I want to welcome them both to the board. Kind of excited to have some some young guns coming on and looking forward to the enthusiasm that they can bring. And I think there'll be good additions. Trustees comments, we'll start with Ruth.
Just need agenda, thank you.
Okay, Bruce?
I could, I'd like to add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
It would be discussion, action, authorizing the mayor to sign the community solar subscriber agreement with O I A pending attorney review.
Okay. Ending attorney review, okay, well, that is item F.
Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, Andy?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the reelected positions. And I'd like to congratulate the newly elected positions that bring some new blood in the village. And with that, I'd like to mention Eric, who in a prior election actually was intelligent enough to research the information. Find out that you had to vote March, find out that you had to do a petition, get your name on ballot, which he did successfully. Ran a good election, didn't win the election, but then got appointed and ran a good election again. As opposed to a group of people who tried to do a coup last night. In all my time in the village board, pushing twenty years, my time in the village in general, you'd have one or two people doing ready campaign, a secret one, is always failed to do this ability as it did last night. But they actually have four people in their group trying to take over control of the village board in a secret. What in my opinion is a cowardly deceptive practice, you try to do what amounts to a coup. So disappointing for those people, it's ridiculous. Current comments on today is what you say on Facebook and such is that we hide the election. We keep secret elections, that's just nonsense. If you voted in the village election, as most people who claim to like the village would have done, it's always been in March, it's not a secret. I just can't believe that somebody would try to do something like that. That's enough to knock you out, that's all I have.
Thank you, Andy. Um, Mike Shepard?
Um, congratulations to Eric and Nate. A little disappointed, I'm not going to be the youngest guy on the board anymore. But I look forward to working with you, other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, Meg?
Again, congratulations to everyone who was successful in the at the election the other night. Thank you to Andy for your service, we'll we'll miss you. And because I'm the only one decked out in green on the board, I will wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day.
Whoa.
And on the board, oh, she she had picked that earlier. Anyway.
Um, I I got a couple of things I'll run down through. There's a chowder cook-off on March twenty-sixth from one to five. Go around to the different vendors and taste their chowder, and some of them are not even clam chowder. They're different kinds of chowder for people who say, I don't like clams. So check it out with the Chamber of Commerce. I think you buy a ten dollar ticket and then you can go to each business and get a sample. And at the end, they'd like you to vote on the best chowders. And you know, it's just a nice way to get out in the village and to support our businesses. And Lord knows, people in our community have supported our businesses beyond what I would have ever expected. It's been tremendous, and I hope there's one more chance to get out and do it. The installation of new streetlights has begun. We're changing out from the rose-colored, pinkish-colored bulbs to a white bulb. It's going to be a little different for people. It's much more efficient. It's, you know, we're talking like twenty percent of the electricity to run the bulbs. When we did three quarters of the village the last time, it knocked our bill down from eighty thousand a year to about sixty-five thousand. So this will add or subtract from that sixty-five thousand dollar total. And you know, if you look at it, that that gives us more money to spend on paving roads, putting in sidewalks, whatever it might be. And and we're always looking to find ways to save money. And I know that the last time we did this, we got the number one complaint from one person was that the old lights used to light up their yard. So when the dog went out at night, they could see the dog in the yard, and now with the new lights, they can't. Well, if that's the only problem we have, we'll live with that. Let's see, the court is reminding people that they still have to wear masks when you come into the court. And they have a drop box outside the door, so you don't even have to come in the court if you have to pay a ticket. People have asked me constantly now about concerts. We have two that are online, permanent, regular, we know they're happening. June twenty-ninth, Trouble Mill Moore, which is an Allman Brothers-type tribute band. And July eighth, Humphrey McGee will be on the island. And if you go to cctix.com, you can buy tickets for both of those concerts. And the last time I had talked to Chuck Chiao, he said he had nine concerts lined up, he was still waiting to cross a couple of Ts and dot some Is before he released them. But one of them will be just before the Fourth of July with fireworks, which is what we have asked him to do, and he's doing it. Talked to Linda Ross recently about the parade, the Memorial Day Parade. They're a go, they're full steam ahead. Unfortunately, this year, you know, we always go on the Memorial Day, the traditional one. While the holiday and the traditional one are the same day this year, so we're going to be in competition for bands and and other things. Groups that go from community to community, to different parades. It's going to be a little difficult to get as many as we're used to, but they do think they can get enough to make it a nice parade. And gotta love the fact that there's going to be a parade in the village, it's a sign of good things, and it's got to make, should make people excited. I know it makes me excited. Again, following up on the election, very excited about Nate and Eric. Two young people who wanted to get involved, and there wasn't a place yet on the board. And Nate chose to get involved with the planning board. Eric, as Andy said, mounted a nice campaign four years ago, almost got elected. And I took him aside and said, you you can't quit, because obviously you have some some clout with people in the community who must like you. And get involved with the planning board or the zoning board or something like that, so you know a little more about what goes on with the village. So he did, and he got on the on the zoning board and has been on it for four years, learning, you know, how that works. And I think he's ready to come on and join this board, and I think both of them will do a great job for us. Kind of excited about it. I understand what Andy's saying about the election stuff. A little disappointing personally, because a lot of the comments were that we're secretive. We don't tell anybody what's going on. My God, has anybody ever known me to be shy about talking about the village? I mean, I'm on with Shelley Hoffman, I first, for a year and a half, I was on every Wednesday, telling her what was going on in the village. What would, even with the COVID, what we could do, what we couldn't do. Now I'm on every other week, and we talk about chili cook-offs and chowder cook-offs and all the kind of stuff that's happening around the village. I I think we've been pretty open and transparent. I tell people to call me. If you can't get me, leave a message, I call people back. I I'm really disappointed, because I I worked very hard to be there for the people. And because because I think that's our job, and I've worked very hard to do it. Even during COVID, I'm on the phone all the time with people. Chuck calls me every other day to talk about something. I call Mo and we talk things through, I've talked, I talk with the chief. There's been people who call, I get a mess, usually messages from Jody. Please call this person, they they have a concern. I usually try to call them as soon as I see the message. So a little bogus, I think, on that they needed to, they wanted to make it more transparent, more open. I I think we're pretty open, we're on now live on Facebook. How many board meetings in Anadog County are live on Facebook? We are. I think that's pretty good, and we have PAC B that shows our meetings six or seven times, so that nothing we say at meetings can be very secret. Everybody gets to see it, and we have no plans to be secret. That being said, I want to thank Andy for his his jumping on board and and filling in for the vacancy we had, and then getting elected and being on board. I have all the respect in the world for Andy for his past time as mayor. He did a great job. I learned a lot when he was mayor. I I do never have quite done the research-type work that Andy did. You know, when it came to facts and stats and numbers, Andy had it, and he was on top of it, and he's been a great asset to our board. I'm going to miss him. Fortunately, he's my brother-in-law, so I get to see him a little bit. But I wish Andy all the best, and thank you for all your service, Andy. And that's all I got. We'll move on to department heads. Start with our attorney, Joe.
I I think we want to add. Be regarding individual last evening in Florida requesting a license. They had Community Park on May twenty-eighth, so I believe we want to add that as an agenda item, be under pending business. Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Village clerk, Mo.
I just wanted to say thank you to Andy, I worked with him for quite a few years, I think you were the mayor that when I was. But it's been great, you've done a great job, and I hope to see you around. Otherwise, I will stick to the agenda.
Thank you, Mo. Code officer, Greg.
Uh, one thing I want to mention, uh, a- after I say congratulations to the individuals that were elected. It was a pretty good showing for the village election. And we are definitely going to miss Nate and Eric, Nate on the planning board and Eric on the zoning board of appeals. They have truly been assets for the last four-plus years. Somewhat, you know, they wanted to get involved, and it's, you know, you you can't always, you know, get elected to the position you want, but there are other ways to serve in the village. And we've had a pretty good showing, we've had five people come forward to be on our planning and zoning boards. We have, we're going to have one more opening for an alternate on the planning board, which would be able to be appointed next month. So it's it's really been a good outpouring of people looking to serve on the various boards, so it's, we're going to miss some of the experience, but it's nice to get new blood. And congratulations to the trustees that were reelected as well, and the mayor. I have one item, it's more of a more of a DPW codes office item, we're going to be starting the twenty-twenty-two sidewalk program. That program, there are twelve properties along East Genesee Street from Festifair Way down to Curtis Avenue. And there is the the one property on Oswego Street, which is Grace Episcopal Church, where a sidewalk has been sorely needed for a long time. Years ago, the planning board had the property at one thirty-six East Genesee Street install a stub of sidewalk, so that in the future, we would have a beginning and an end to to meet to the middle. And looks like we're finally going to get that going, and you know, in- individuals in that area can now safely walk into the center of the village. After that's complete, so other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Yeah, that's a pretty important connection, we've had people living in a in a development. They have no no walking access to downtown without walking in the road. And that's just not very, is that safe? And it's, we we're encouraging people to walk, and let's give them sidewalks, and and it's been overdue, and I'm happy we're taking that step. I also want to thank Greg, because he dropped the folder off today, and he's been working his little tail off on, you know, some different code stuff, particularly the solar array. We would join, we might join the stretch building codes. The sidewalk project, he's also in in charge of our taking the the all the bills and stuff that come in, the checks and stuff from maybe any of the Main Street grant buildings. And they, when they want their refund from this county, they have to come through Greg and prove that they paid and all that stuff, so Greg's doing that, so he's been busy. And he's been doing a great job with it, so thanks, Greg. Next up, our treasurer's not here, is is Ruth here from the senior center?
Yes.
Okay.
I I'm under family obligation to echo what Megan said and wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day, and I hope people enjoy it. What a gorgeous spring day it was, so I hope people enjoyed that. We have our first concert tomorrow at the senior center. We usually start in a little bit later, but we're going to go ahead and start early and get folks feeling, getting the music and enjoying themselves. So tomorrow afternoon, two-thirty, John Vona will be at the senior center. Also want to thank our local sponsors, because we have some local merchants that are helping us bring the music, and that's Barnes Memorial, Bell Tours, and the Red Mill Manor. So the senior center is doing their full list of of activities, and and we've added and added, so we're pretty much back to our normal full day, every day, Monday through Friday. So come on down and enjoy yourself, or we'd be happy to see you. And other than that, unless anybody has any questions.
Very good, thank you, Ruth.
Yep.
And please, Chief of Staff Jack.
Good evening. After a long wait due to supply chain issues and ordering problems with the vendor, I'm glad to say that our body cameras have arrived. We've had the the install process go on, we're going through some training now with our staff. And within the next three to four weeks, I would anticipate that body cameras will be deployed by our personnel ownership. We've had in-car cameras for well over twenty years, so this hopefully will be a fairly seamless transition for us to to move into body cameras as well as in-car cameras. It will provide a greater accountability for our organization, and I think it's a step in the right direction. It's something that we worked on with trustee Shepard and trustee Seaco and other members of our executive board, two oh three, police intervention and collaboration committee that we had, and one of the recommendations that came out of that. And I'm looking forward to it being completed. Other than that, unless there's questions, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mike. All right, we'll move on to the the agenda, we under pending business, discussion, possible action regarding the Paper Mill Island Agreement. Joe has put all of our suggestions in there, you know, and I appreciate, Joe had said before that several members of the board had sent him thoughts, ideas, changes, and he was able to work them into the agreement. I I read through it again today. I hope most of you had a chance to go through it and see if the changes were made that you were looking for. Chuck Chiao, who's our promoter, is looking to to see the agreement. He wants to see if there's any changes, and we should get it to him as quick as we can. Does anybody have a problem? If we, you know, make a motion to accept the agreement as it is and move it on to the promoter and have him sign it first? And once he signs it, he he may have some changes that he recommends that he wants, then we might have to consider it. And it may not be an automatic signing, but the quicker we can get it to him, the quicker he can look at it and get it back to us, and and we can get this thing taken care of. I I think the agreement is is well done, thank you, Joe, great job. You know, I think it covers some of the things we're concerned about, I appreciate the efforts of the chief and the lieutenant to to look at the security numbers and the system that's been in place for a long time, and give the promoter a bit of a break. They asked for a break, and it's nice that we're able to do that with without jeopardizing security. So anybody read it since Joe sent the last one and have any comments?
Question if I can. The promoter has requested putting a structure on the island, is your, this license, the most person address that at all, or do we stay away from it?
No, it it does, I believe in the second paragraph.
Should have gone, forgotten it, but.
Excuse me, in the sixth paragraph, I talked about site modifications, and any site modification, which structure would be a site modification, would require a village approval.
Because we want, another trustee just wants a minimum number of concerts before we make that sacrifice. Concern is, this is the, instead of a beer tent, putting out the ominous sheds or whatever. That he, I know the promoter's pushing for that, but we need them to be available for anybody else who uses that island.
That that's crucial, is that he he agreed that if he puts it out there, that if another promoter takes a date that's empty and wants to sell beer and stuff that they say that they can use that, because we can't put a, if you put a tent in addition to that, you take up an awful lot of space for people. So.
I'm hoping that this will go to Joe, you know, Chuck, and then he will present that, and it'll come back.
That's fine, I mean, the other way I set this up too is he only has exclusive rights to the venue for exclusive dates. So a permanent structure, he would not have the right to erect a permanent structure, because it would go into a date, he doesn't have exclusive access to the exclusive use of of venues, so it's it's built in, I don't think I'm as explicit about it, but if he only has the right to use the venue on X, Y, and Z date, and the structure that he's built is there on A, B, or C date, it doesn't show up the way the contract's written.
Okay. I just wanted to. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have any concerns or suggestions? Or we, do you think you're prepared to vote to to send it to to accept it and send it to the promoter?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
We didn't realize. We could see you.
I can see you, but I couldn't tell people we're not, can we, can someone, can I get a motion to accept the Paper Mill Island Agreement as is and pass it on to the promoter? Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I think probably what will happen is, I don't think Chuck's around tomorrow, and maybe on Monday, he will make sure that Chuck Chiao gets it. And because I'm very pleased with the way Chuck has been, our Chuck has been dealing with that Chuck. So. All right, move on to new business. Greg, we've lost the picture of the board.
Yeah, item B. Item B, so the approval of a licensing process for Julian F R A I Z E.
Sure, I I can, I'll present a motion to the board to grant Julian Frazee a license to stay at Community Park on May twenty-eighth, subject to Mr. Frazee filling out a village application and applying in terms of that application.
I'll make that note in a second.
Any other discussion? For for, again, for people that aren't familiar, this is the fellow who came in last meeting and talking about the canoe trip, and they'd like to spend the night as they come through at Community Park. And we told him we just needed a little time to to look and see if there were some obvious issues, and obviously, we are comfortable with it, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, thanks, Joe.
Yes.
All right, now, I, under new business, item A, I get a motion to appoint Kevin Baker as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals effective March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two at a rate of fifty dollars a month. Just so people know, the alternate attends all the meetings, and if somebody can't make that meeting, then the alternate steps up and sits in one of the regular chairs and is the active person that night. And by being there every meeting, they they don't miss out on what's being talked about. So if something comes up for a vote the next meeting, they've heard all the discussion. So an alternate is pretty important for us, because a lot of our people have jobs where they can't always make the meetings. So we have a motion and a second for Kevin Baker, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried. Item B, can I get a motion to declare the following supplies from the DPW as surplus? An HP laptop, an HP plotter, an HP inkjet, Samsung cellphone, and eleven-foot snowplow?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Can I get a motion? All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried. Item C, can I get a motion authorizing the appointment of Alexander Gould as a DPW laborer at twenty-three dollars and sixty cents an hour, effective March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and he will be signed to the the water sewer department?
Oh, second, whatever.
Any discussion?
Alex was employed by the village in the past during the seasonal employee. He was interviewed by Chuck and our two foremen, so he's gone through a process, a vetting process.
Yep. Yep, Chuck was fairly impressed with him and wanted to give him a shot, so another young guy. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried. Okay, item D, discussion, possible action to proceed with the twenty-twenty community development grant for the community park improvements, which include a new playground, seating area, and parking with handicap access. This was the discussion that we had during the work session with the engineer. Anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
Make motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item E, can I get a motion to appoint Christopher Greer as a member of the planning board effective March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, at a rate of fifty dollars a month?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried. Item F, discussion, action to allow the mayor to sign the community solar agreement. Pending a re- depending, you know, pending a review.
With O I A.
What's that?
With a specific company.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Ending attorney review.
Attorney review, yes.
I'm sure.
Get a motion and a second for, then we can have discussion if anybody wants.
What a motion. And I suggest all discussion be addressed to Greg. Greg.
So this is, this is a a program where we join a solar farm type thing, and we get a ten percent discount on our electric bills, I believe. And so that's a nice savings for us, and you know, we we can't do some of the things that people would like us to do as far as energy and all that, but what what we can do, it's nice that we want to do. And I I'm glad you want to pursue this.
This would be to the farm that's being constructed out on Church Road.
Church Road.
Yep.
This refund comes when it produces power?
It's a, it's a, once the, right, we won't see credits until the farm is up and running, and those credits are on our national grid bill, so there's no additional bills that the village gets, it's just national grid. On our national grid bill, so there's no additional bills that the village gets. It's just national grid with a credit.
This isn't available to individual homeowners, we're there.
It's available to homeowners and other commercial businesses, um. Looking to have someone come talk. About community solar, uh, program. That, uh, the state would like individuals as well to subscribe to these, uh, farms. And basically what New York State is trying to do is to to get people to say that they're interested in this type of. Renewable energy to sign up as a, you know, subscriber. There's no cost. You see a credit on your electric bill. Uh, different companies have different ways of billing. This company that we're looking to go to has consolidated billing. So it's not additional work for the clerk's office, uh, to figure out which bills are what. So, uh, it does show up as a credit on your national grid bill.
In proportion to the honor generated by that one.
Right, right, uh.
Not guaranteed ten percent.
Not on every, every month. It could be more, it could be less.
Yeah, that ten percent's like the average, I think, is what they were talking.
Depends on the effectiveness of the generation.
And it, and for people wondering, why would they let us sign up and then give us a discount without it costing anything? There is something in, I think, in their contract, the grants and stuff that they got, that they have to get X number. Of. Signups in order to qualify for money that they get from the federal government and that type of stuff. So we're doing them a favor by signing up and filling up that roster. Am I right, Greg?
That's basically right. New York State is pushing this, uh, to meet their energy goals.
Greg, we thought you'd like the, uh, that's a charity over there.
Yep. Yep.
Take a bow, raise your shoulder. It's not a bad thing right now.
Okay, we, do we have any other questions for Greg or any other comments? We do have a a motion in a second, right? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's carried. We're down to time to pay bills as audited. Does anybody have anything? Any business that needs to be discussed before we pay bills?
I just wanted to remind. Everyone to speak up for it. The residents that village taxes are to by April first without penalty. And you can, uh, drop them off in our box. Mail them, stop in and ring the bell or pay online.
Very good. Thank you, Mo. Glad for, glad you reminded everybody.
And just. Something for Chuck since he's not here.
Yes.
The DPW crew has been very active over the last few days trimming trees. These are trees that were hitting snowplows during the winter. So they've been trimming on Downers Street, I think. Probably today they're moving to Central Street or. So while they've got opportunity, but they're not plowing. They're out working on snowplowing anyway.
Yeah.
But, uh, well.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're a busy crew. They, they, Chuck always finds something for them to be doing. So a nice weather today is, I should think everybody's excited. It's probably the luck of the Irish that we got seventy degrees today. Um, it was nice to be out with shorts on and I got my first four mosquito bites of the year. So. There is always that one little negative, but. Um, to wrap things up, can I get a motion to pay bills as audited? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried? Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting at eight oh three?
Yeah. It's done, Dick. Call for question. These rules. All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. See everybody the first Thursday in April.